This is him from Black Slough.
Wishes. And this is all with liberty and just.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. The time is now 7:03. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 9, 2021, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Minutes are, we have minutes for November 1st, 2022. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, uh, the Friends of Nutley Singers has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a Sunday raffle for February 12th, 2023, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Um, and the location is 300 Franklin Avenue. We need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Commissioner Petracca, you have proclamation tonight?
We do have a proclamation tonight. We have a proclamation for my good friend, Michael Padilla. Where is he? Hello, Michael. So I'm gonna read it. Whereas Michael Padilla is a longtime resident in the township of Nutley, he's married to his wife Jeanette and has two daughters, Gina Marie and Nicolette. And whereas Michael Padilla started with the Nutley Police Department in 2001 and moved through the ranks to his present position of lieutenant. Where Mike, in his tenure in the police department, headed up the juvenile bureau, where he mentored and oversaw hundreds of young students and young adults, leading them towards responsible and productive lives. And whereas in 2008, Mike joined in the Nutley Municipal Alliance Committee and became an active member seeking out different events and programs to help educate and empower our students. And whereas Mike was successful in bringing the recovery pro, the recovery van into Nutley that allows residents with drug alcohol-related concerns to seek community help. And whereas Mike established and put into place the lead program, law enforcement against drugs, to educate and empower Nutley youth and in the ever-present fight against drugs and alcohol abuse. And whereas in addition to lead, Mike also oversees Nutley Police Academy, PALS, Partnership for Children in Essex, all of which programs helping to direct our youth towards positive thinking and decision-making. Now therefore, it be resolved that the mayor and the board of commissioners and township of Nutley do hereby recognize and applaud all efforts Mike has made to help and guide our youth towards better decisions-making and choices, the selflessness actions Mike does year and year after, makes him perfect selection as GCA DA's volunteer of the year. Let's give Michael a round of applause.
Thank you. Son? Okay. Thank you. First, I would like to thank all of the members of the Board of Commissioners and School Board for what you do day in and day out. All of your hard work and dedication to our residents continues to make Nutley a community others wish they lived in or hope they can learn from. Working with all of you on so much over the years only continues to prove how when you put families first with a no-red-tape mentality, how much can get accomplished. I would also like to thank the members of the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. Since 1989, Jakarta has worked to create funding opportunities for all of New Jersey's 300-plus municipal alliance committees and allowed us to do so much within the communities we all serve. At Nutley, we're worked, we're lucky to work under the guidance of Essex County's MAC Coordinator, Elizabeth Marquez, who's here today. Thank you. Uh, and the years I've known Ms. Marquez, she has been an inspiration to all with her unwavering dedication to Jakarta's master plan and MAC's mission of prevention, education, and public awareness. I have to admit that I am only in this conversation for this award because of the unbelievable team our coordinator, Sam Corrella, has assembled and her tireless effort to make Nutley's MAC the organization that connects all the dots in our community. With committee members and community partners like Joe Capello, Tony Iannarone, Catherine Carmichael of Nutley Family Service Bureau, Joel Torres of the Essex Prevention Coalition Adapt, and the dream team of Adam Jernik, Linda Diacheson, and Dana Malillo, we know anything's possible. We've done flash mobs, Hope Speaker Series, Above the Influence campaigns, Carnival of Hope for Nutley, Sticker Shock, Stomp Out Stigma, mindfulness and peer-to-peer events, and the Knockout Opiate Walk, town residents, scout troops, and all of the Nutley High School fall sports teams coming together to put informational door hangers on every house in town. We even added a permanent drug take-back box in the Nutley Police Department. My, my involvement with MAC goes back to 2008 when Commissioner Petracca established Hope for Nutley. As a new commissioner, one of his main objectives to, to work to educate parents on drug and alcohol abuse issues, but with a concentrated focus on a growing opioid issue. This led to having events like Kids Count with Jack Elsmore, Hidden in Plain Sight, Project Pride, with inmates from the New Jersey Department Corrections, and a joint community meeting on the prescription drug and heroin epidemic title, Our Kids Are Dying, All the Nutley. These events brought a lot of attention and real conversation to a problem we knew no family was immune to. But being fully aware, you can't expect a kid to just say no without teaching them how. We considered lead. It was head above the shoulders, above the rest, evidence-based drug education with scripted lesson plans that include character building, goal-setting, decision-making, conflict resolution, blocks that incorporate games and role-playing scenarios that our kids could learn by doing. In 2017, lead CEO Nick DeMoro and Governor Chris Christie, as part of his statewide crusade against opioid addiction, visited Nutley to see lead in action. Led by Chief Strummo and Deputy Chief Green and their commitment to community-oriented policing, we were positioned for success and we didn't stop there. We started the Junior Police Academy, ran the Max Akineus Week, and police in lunch in schools. A simple concept, four pizzas, 10 kids, and real conversations on topics they want to talk about in an environment they're already comfortable in. Hoping to offer options of help over handcuffs, we created the Nutley Referral Services Car with information on perform care, Nutley Family Service Bureau, numbers for food pantries, domestic violence, mental health, family support, and veteran services. And our Road to Recovery brochure has QR scanner codes, numbers on state recovery services, intervention services, and recovery coaches, as well as information about 211. The officers I work with at the Nutley Police Department care about the people we serve. And for those that may not want help at the first point of contact, we know we can leave them with a card and a conversation that we're confident can help them when they're ready. I know the main focus of what I have highlighted doesn't begin to cover all of what the Nutley Municipal Alliance has accomplished, but as a Nutley High School football coach for 15 years, a police officer over 20, with more than 12 spent of that as a juvenile liaison, I spent many days and nights with parents and kids through the good and the bad. When a kid tells you they smoke weed because it feels good and helps them with their problems, you can't tell them it doesn't. You also can't start telling them what it might cost them in 20 years when all they know is what problems they have right now. But every kid does have dreams. Focus on that, build trust, and they'll believe that you're really there to help them. And when they do, they'll tell you what's going on and you'll figure it out together. Healing adverse childhood experiences or ACEs is one thing, but creating ways to avoid them altogether, now we're getting somewhere. I would hope if I could drive down Route 1 to the Princetonian Diner and have a cup of coffee with former AG Carrie Edwards, for whom this award is named, that he would appreciate all the things we've done together in Nutley, and that we can continue to support his vision for New Jersey. I would like to close by thanking the residents of Nutley, my township of Nutley coworkers, my family, my friends, especially my two daughters, Nicolette, John, and her boyfriend Ryan, who are all here, as well as my mother, my mother-in-law, father-in-law. And last but never least, my wife Jeanette, because without her, there can never be me. And while the world is out there looking for leaders, we're just gonna keep making them in Nutley. Thank you.
So, so Mike, you could, you could stay up there because we're gonna take a picture, but before I give all the commissioners a chance to respond, you know, it doesn't say a million things in here that you actually do in this resolution, because I know you coach football too, right? That's not in there. So when I first got elected in 2008, you know, I knew Mike a little bit, and that's exactly when we were starting the Hope Committee. And I remember I caught you outside by the parking lot, and I said, you know, Mike, I want you to get involved in this Hope Committee stuff. You know, it's helping our parents endure for drug abuse kids and things like that, the signs and all that stuff. So he says, what do you want to do? Said, I want to have like this big carnival, I want to get like rides at the high school, bring all these kids out. And I was with Joe Valano, if you remember at the time, you're like, alright, you got it. And you walked away. And I said to Joe Valano at the time, this guy alright, like, he said, alright. Uh, he's a good guy. And I have to say, from start to finish, Mike, you have never, I don't want to say I have never let us down in Nutley. All the kids that are in need, the most important people, you stepped up for your whole, your whole career in Nutley. And it, it doesn't go unnoticed to me at all. Anything that we ask you or you volunteer for, it's always from your heart. And I have to tell you in front of your family, I can't say I've ever met a, a better person. Thank you for all that you do for the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Like Commissioner Petracca said, the, what's on the proclamation, uh, doesn't capture everything that you do for this community. Uh, one is Nutley Family Service Bureau, which we've served on the board. I had the pleasure of serving with you. Uh, and I always admired you and your leadership on the, the service bureau. Uh, like our former executive director said on the service bureau, it, it takes a village, but you're a village unto yourself. Y- your leadership, your dedication, your service to this community i- is virtually second to none. I can't think of anyone else who, who is involved in so much and does so much for this community. Uh, you're such a great leader. You lead from the front, and your, your leadership is unparalleled. So, uh, uh, I'm, I'm at a loss for words, but you, you're, you're an incredible asset to this community, and I wish we had 1,000 more, Mike Padillas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, it's not easy going third, because by the time it gets to me, they've pretty much said everything. But I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for all of our youth and for our township in general. All right. We, we've highlighted some of the things that you do here. I know there are many other things that you do behind the scenes, and there's no important, more important work than working with our children. And you do an outstanding job, and I thank you for that. Congratulations, Mike. Well deserved.
Commissioner Evans?
Imagine what it's like going forth. So, Mike, just a couple things. Um, I'm, I won't repeat what my commissioners have already said, although it's well worth repeating, all right? But I do think about a couple things. Um, Nutley is so fortunate, uh, to have someone with your character and your ability who can wake up every day and with an abundance of compassion and empathy, help children in need. And I'm certain that there are lives out there that you don't see anymore, or don't hear about anymore, of, you know, young folks that have grown up who are leading better lives because of the work and the efforts that you put into it. So I thank you for your leadership. I thank the team that's around you, as you, as you credited earlier, for the work that they do. And, and I would echo everything that the commissioners are saying is Nutley is quite fortunate to have you. So please keep doing it, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Mike, on behalf of the people, the parents and the kids of the township of Nutley, I want to congratulate you for your leadership in prevention, intervention, and education in people and the dangers of drug abuse and alcohol abuse. And, uh, as Commissioner Kelly said, and it only is a little bit of what you do in the township of Nutley. I don't know where you find the time to coach and help the Family Service Bureau and do everything you, other things you do, but congratulations. We appreciate all your hard work and your service to the township. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know what? How about we go over here? We're standing back.
No, you do it, you do it, you do it down there. I'll just stand in the back.
Well, let's move on to reports. Bishop Petracca?
Yes, I have my public safety report for this month. Thank you.
Bishop Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade tree report for the month of November 2022, Mayor.
Bills, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for December 20th, 2022, public affairs, $137,695.38. Revenue and finance, $2,737.738, I'm sorry, $738.82. Public safety, $87,583.11. Public works, $165,678.10. Parks and public property, $293,809.21. Water utility, $17,523.37. Payroll as of Friday, December 9th, 2022, regular payroll total, $952,876.67. Overtime payroll total, $59,787.06. Total payroll, $1,000,2663.73. For a grand total of $4,452,691.72.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor, uh, may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move to Commissioner of announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Nothing this evening.
Bishop Tucci?
Uh, nothing other than I want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, whatever you celebrate, whoever you celebrate with, just do it to the fullest and enjoy life. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Kelly?
Last night, uh, we had the first of many upcoming, uh, mental health panels. It was delayed, uh, from last week, from the inclement weather to, to last night. It was well-attended. The topic was depression around the holidays, and it's for anyone who is struggling with mental health or anyone who knows someone who is struggling with mental health, if they want to get more information or get, uh, different, uh, referral services. There's counselors there to, to help, uh, help you, uh, understand the, the information that you would need to process. Going forward, we're looking towards having at least once a mu, one, one a month. Uh, the next topic we're thinking is body shaming, body positive. Uh, and we're gonna go from there. There's meant, there's tons of topics in mental health. We're open to suggestions. If you have a topic that in mind that you think is special to you, uh, other topics are gonna include post-traumatic stress disorder, uh, gender dysphoria. Uh, so if you're, if you're interested, please contact the Health Department. We'll have more information as we start rolling out this program. Uh, we're looking to try and do one a month, so we're gonna have, uh, plenty of opportunities for you to interface. Thank you.
Bishop Petracca?
You know, I'd just like to dovetail on Commissioner Kelly's statement too, with the holidays, a lot of it is, there is a lot of depression out there. And maybe we could let Mike Padilla head up another thing in town. I noticed that this past Thanksgiving, we did a lot of single, um, turkey dinners at the deli. And even for Christmas, it's amazing to me how many people spend the holidays by themselves. So if you have a neighbor, somebody in your, your neighborhood, or if you know of somebody and you could open your door to that, that person, or, or, or send food over to them, anything to cheer them up, because I have to tell you, spending a holiday by yourself is not a happy thing. So just be a good neighbor, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just to add to everybody's holiday greetings, this is our last meeting of the year, so everybody have a hea, healthy and happy new year. So, um, let's move to ordinance introductions. Bishop Petracca?
Yeah, so before I read this ordinance, this ordinance is for, um, to move the fire chief position from the volunteers to the career guys. I just want to say before I read the ordinance, it's not a knock in any shape, way, or form against the volunteers. I'm a big man of tradition. This ordinance is probably close to being 100 years old, I would think. But I just think that in today's age and coming into 2023, you know, our career guys are there every single day, and I am in contact with them every single day. So I think it's, um, time to update this. So I'll read it. An ordinance to amend and revise Chapter 57 Fire Department of Nutley Township Code. Whereas the governing body of the township of Nutley believes it is in the best interest of the township to amend and revise Chapter 57 in the township occurred. Be ordained by the Board of Commissioners to the township of Nutley and the county of Essex, New Jersey, as follows. Section 1, 57-4 of the Township of Code, Township of Nutley, entitled Officers, enumerated is hereby amended to read as follows. The officers of, of the Fire Department shall consist of one chief, four captains, five lieutenants, three assistant chiefs, one secretary, police and fire signal system superintendent. The Director of the, uh, Public Safety shall have the discretion to designate and appoint a deputy chief upon two additional captains and lieutenants. Section 57.5 of the Township of Code, of the Township of Nutley, entitled Chief of Department, is hereby amended to read as follows. Chief of the Fire Department, the Chief of the Fire Department shall be a full-time member of the Nutley Township Fire Department and shall be appointed by the Director of Public Safety. He shall have the sole and entire control over the Fire Department and shall report directly to the Director of Public Safety. Section 3 of the Township Code of the Township of Nutley, entitled Assistant Chief, is hereby amended to read as follows. Assistant Chief shall be volunteer fireman who shall serve as active volunteer fireman for at least three years. One from each volunteer company shall be appointed by the Director of Public Safety for a term of two years. Section 4 ordinance of the Township of Nutley, which are inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to extent of such inconsistencies. Five, if any sections, subsection clause or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be unconstitutional or invalid by any court, competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect remaining portion of this ordinance. Section 6, all of the provisions of 57 of the Code of the Township of Nutley are not further amended and remain in full force and effect. The ordinance shall take effect 20 days after a final passage, including still law. I move that this ordinance be passed to its second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, but, and that further consideration of said ordinance for the final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held on the date of?
January 3rd.
January 3rd, 2020, 2023. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, an introduction.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before we go to the presentation, if anybody wants to, uh, take, take a five-minute break and you wanted to leave? Mike, your family may want to-
Take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Five-minute break.
Madam Clerk? Let's go back on the record.
Okay, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, tonight we have, uh, a presentation, uh, for the benefit of the Board of Commissioners on the preliminary results of the townwide, uh, revaluation. You know, we are already receiving, uh, phone calls and- phone calls and questions and emails regarding uh, the the initial letter, evaluation letter that went out. Uh, I hope that tonight uh, this will benefit the commissioners in understanding the process that they've gone through and what the next steps are and what the the overall outcome is is for the town. So uh, Ed Brown is here as our tax assessor, and we have appraisal systems representatives that will walk us through a presentation. So with that, I I have I'll have some other comments later, but I'll turn it over to you guys.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I'm going to turn this over to Rob Breschak from Appraisal Systems. He's been the project manager and the lead man on the revaluation. Um, I just want to start out by uh, just making it known that um, this is that's something that um, the valuation is something that the Township of Nutley was looking to do. We were ordered by the uh, county tab, the Essex County Board of Taxation uh, with the uh, state of New Jersey enforcing it to put on a revaluation for the two thousand nineteen tax year. Um, due to circumstances out of our control or or things that are going on, like closing off on the Roche, and of course, a pandemic, um, it got pushed down the road. But this is really, um, we're putting it on now for the two thousand twenty-three tax year, and you know, this is basically as far as we could extend it out. Um, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob Breschak from Appraisal Systems, and he's going to walk us through um, the revaluation itself and the results with some-
Thank you, Ed. Good evening, everyone. So once again, my name is Rob Breschak. I'm here tonight with Todd Harris. We work for Appraisal Systems. We're the company that did the revaluation this year. What I'd like to do for you tonight is just briefly explain to you what a revaluation is, why a revaluation needed to be done, and I'll take you through the seven steps of the revaluation process. Uh, my presentation should probably only take about fifteen minutes or so. Uh, and then I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. So uh, let's start off with what is a revaluation? So basically, a revaluation is when an outside firm such as appraisal systems comes into a city or a town. We appraise every property in town, all your vacant land, commercial, residential exempt properties. We bring those values up to one hundred percent fair market value as of October first of the pre-tax year. Okay, so in this case, we're setting the values as of October first of two thousand twenty-two. Then what happens is the township will use these new values for property tax purposes. Okay, so a revaluation is done to make sure everyone is paying their fair share in taxes. It's a redistribution of taxes, if you will, amongst all the property owners. It is not to raise taxes. Okay, so that's one of the biggest misconceptions when you hear the term revaluation is that it's done to raise taxes. That's simply not true. All right, so the town by law is not allowed to gain any money from this revaluation process. So they're going to collect the same amount of money as they did the previous year, assuming that the budget remains neutral. But what happens is the the taxes amongst the property owners may shift slightly. Okay, but for every dollar one property that's up in taxes, another property owner is going to go down that dot. Okay, so once again, it's revenue neutral. And the way that the township ensures that this happens is the tax rate gets adjusted accordingly. So the way the township determines how much taxes a property owner pays, they take the assessed value on record, they times it by the tax rate and result of the property taxes. And there's one tax rate for the entire township. So the difference between the taxes, say from property owner A, paid from property owner B, is that assessed value that's on record. So I think a good example to show how this all plays out is this example. I believe everyone has a copy that at the top it says, for example, purposes only. I just want to kind of go quick, because this kind of shows you how it all comes together for the township. So if we just take a property A right now, uh, their two thousand twenty-two assessment, for example, is three twenty-one nine hundred. Okay, so that's their assessment. That's not their fair market value. Right now, Nutley is operating at like a seventy-five percent ratio. So this assessment is actually seventy-five percent of true market value. Now, the tax rate in Nutley for two thousand twenty-two is three dollars and eighty-six cents. And that's part one hundred. So to figure out how many, how much taxes this property owner pays, you take the three twenty-one nine hundred, you times it by the tax rate of point zero three eight six four, and they're paying twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars in taxes. Okay, now our company comes in and we're raising all the assessments up to one hundred percent fair market value. So the assessed values are going to go up. Okay, so if you take the total net taxable value in Nutley, that value is going to increase. Now, for example, if that net taxable value goes up one point five times, meaning you take all the assessments on record for two thousand twenty-two, and then you take the new assessments that we come up with, and you get the difference, that's your average increase. Okay, so for example, if the average increase in this example goes up one point five times, what's going to happen is the tax rate is going to come down by that same factor. That's very important to let the property owners know that you cannot apply two thousand twenty-two's tax rate to the new proposed two thousand twenty-three assessment. Okay, they're going to get a big sticker shock if they do. Okay, so in this example, if you take the two thousand twenty-two tax rate of three dollars and eighty-six cents divided by the one point five factor, what that's saying is, assuming the budget remains neutral, due to the revaluation, going forward into two thousand twenty-three, you're going to get a tax rate of two point five seven six. Okay, so now, how does this affect an individual property owner? Each property owner's tax implication depends on what your property does in relation to the average in the town. So in this example, the net taxable value is going up one point five times. So if your property goes up the same amount, one point five times, you could expect to be tax neutral. Your taxes will not be affected. If your property value increases more than the average, which in this example is one point five times, you could expect a property tax increase going forward. And by the same token, if your property increases less than the average of one point five, you're in line for a tax decrease going forward. So what I'd like to do is just kind of play out the examples for you on this sheet. Okay, so now let's go to two thousand twenty-three. If property A that was assessed for three hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars, if their property goes up the average increase in town, the one point five times, their new proposed two thousand twenty-three assessment will be four eighty-two nine hundred. Okay, so their assessment is going up going into the two thousand twenty-three tax year. But when you apply that by the new tax rate of two point five seven six, if you look at the math, they're paying the exact same amount in taxes that they would have been paying prior to the revaluation. Okay, because once again, their property increased the same rate as the entire township. Now, again, this is going to affect all property owners differently. So I did illustrate two other examples below. If your assessment goes up more than one point five times, so in the next example, if your assessment goes from three twenty-one nine hundred to five fifteen, when you apply that by the new tax rate, yes, your taxes are going to go up. In this example, it's going to go to thirteen thousand two sixty-six. And again, the other example is if your property increases less than that one point five times. So the third example is your property assessment goes from three twenty-one nine hundred to four fifty-seven hundred. Okay, that's not going up one point five times. That's less. Therefore, your taxes are going to go down to eleven thousand six ten. Okay, so that's how this is all going to come together for the property owners in Nutley going forward. Okay? Now, why did a revaluation have to get done in Nutley this year? All right?
He was going to walk through it.
There's a couple of studies that the county and the state do to see if the assessments on record are uniform. And the studies that they came up with showed that the assessments on record are not uniform. And when they're not uniform, that means that the property owners are not paying their fair share in taxes. Some some property owners are paying too much, and some property owners are paying too little. Okay, so basically, as uh, the assessor just mentioned, this was ordered by the by the state and the county to perform this. This way, our company brings the values up to one hundred percent fair market value, and that ensures that everyone's paying their fair share in taxes. Now, how do we accomplish the revaluation? It's pretty much seven steps that we follow, and I'm just going to outline them for you real briefly. The first step is the inspection process, and in my opinion, that's the most important step in this process. This is where inspectors go out to each property and we collect the the data. So at this point, we inspected a hundred percent of all exterior um of the properties, and we have gotten into seventy-five percent of all residential interiors. So at this point, I think that's a pretty good number, but we certainly can improve on that. Okay? It's very important that we see the inside of uh, the interior so we could collect the accurate information. Okay, it's a homeowner's right not to let us into their property. In the event that we do not gain access to a home by the end of this process, our company is obligated to estimate that property at the highest, most reasonable potential. So therefore, if we don't get inside, of course, some assumptions are going to be made, and that may result in a higher assessment. So our company knows that this process is very important. So we are going to continue to do these interior inspections up until the last day of this job, when everything has to get turned over to the county. So we offer these interior inspections two ways, because we are trying to get into as many as possible. One is a physical inspection where the inspector will come out to the property and do a physical walkthrough of the property. Now, just to let the property owners know, the inspection does not take a long time. Usually, it takes about five minutes to do the inside. So we're not going to be there all day. So it's a very quick procedure. Now, in addition to doing a physical inspection, we offer another way to complete this interior inspection, and that's our virtual option. We know in today's world, some people may be a little um cautious about letting someone into their home with, you know, what's going on with COVID and the flu and all the sickness. So we offer an interior inspection where the inspector and the property owner could link up through their phones, and then essentially what the property owner is going to do is give them a tour of the house. So basically, either through FaceTime or a Zoom app or WhatsApp, with technology today, we could link up, and like I said, the inspector will direct the homeowner where to walk and where to point to camera. And that is a sufficient interior inspection. We're able to collect the information. We need to do so by doing that. So there's two options to complete that. The second step of the revaluation process is the analyzation part. Now, that happens at the same time as step number one. So basically, what's taking place is our inspectors are out collecting the information in the field, and then we have appraisers back at the office that are analyzing that data that's being collected, and they're studying the market. The third step is our review process. Once those two are completed, our company reviews all this information. Once we're comfortable with this information, this is where we want to share this information with the the property owners. And that brings us to step number four, which is where we inform the property owners. This is a stage that we're currently in right now. So when we inform, we send out value letters to property owners. Now, these value letters are preliminary. This is only step four of the seven-step process. Okay, so that's important to know that these numbers are still preliminary, and they're still a work in progress. Our company feels that nobody knows their property better than the property owner. So what we like to do is share this information with the property owner and then get feedback from the property owner. Okay? And that brings us to our informal meetings, where we actually have meetings with property owners um, to go over their values. Okay, now, at this point, I'd just like to talk about our website, because once these value letters go out, and they were mailed last week, starting on December fifteenth, we update our website with a lot of useful information. Okay, and if anyone asks, I would definitely direct them to our website, which is www.asinj.com. So at this point, if someone got their value letter, they would be able to go on our website. And one of the first things that they could look at is the neighborhood map that we created. Now, the neighborhood map shows you how we carved up the town into different neighborhoods, and it'll show you what other homes your house is being compared to. Okay, by carving the town up into different neighborhoods, that helps us keep uniformed, and it allows us to compare similar homes together. The second thing that we post on our website is a tax impact calculator. And we give a lot of disclaimers that this is an estimated tax rate that we're coming up with. But at this point, just like the example I just gave, we have collected enough data to project where that net taxable value is going to be going in two thousand twenty-three. So we're able to predict a tax rate going forward, once again, assuming that the tax uh, budget, I'm sorry, the budget remains neutral. So it's not an exact amount, but it's a very good tool to let the property owner know whether they're in line for a tax increase, a tax decrease, or they could expect to be pretty much the same. So they're able to go on our website, they could plug in their old, I call it old now, the two thousand twenty-two assessment, their proposed two thousand twenty-three assessment, and we do the math for you, so we can let you know what to expect going forward. The other thing we post on our website is a list of all the sales that took place in the last two years. And this is very useful. The example I like to give is if you're a colonial-style home, neighborhood one, that's roughly two thousand square feet, you're able to go on our website and filter for sales of colonials that are in neighborhood one, roughly your same square footage, and you could see what they're selling for. So if we have you assess, say, for four hundred thousand dollars, and you find through looking at the sales that similar homes are selling from anywhere from three seventy-five to four twenty-five, that should give you the confidence that your value was paced correctly, and you're assessed where you should be. Okay, and the last thing that we post on our website, which I think is very useful, is all the proposed assessments. Okay, so you will be able to go on our website and look to see what we assess your neighbors at. Okay, so we like to do that for transparency, and I think it's a good tool to utilize, because sometimes property owners have a hard time finding a good comparable sale to their uh, property, or sometimes a good comparable sale really doesn't exist. But property owners know their streets pretty well. And if you're able to compare your property assessment with a couple of your neighbors, as long as you fall where you think you should, that's also a good tool to uh, use to make sure that you have the confidence that you were assessed correctly. So that's where we are now. We updated our website. We're currently in step number five, which is our informal meetings. We are receiving phone calls. It's kind of in business as usual, nothing out of the uh, ordinary, which is good. To date, we have about eighty meetings scheduled with homeowners. I definitely expect that to rise. But our company has the staff to, and we're willing to meet with every representative, uh, I'm sorry, every property owner at meet day. So we're prepared to do that. The sixth step, real quick, is when all these informal meetings are completed, we're going to review all that information that we gathered. We're going to make changes to the assessments. Once we're finalized with that, then this information will get turned over to the the township and the county. We expect that to take place sometime by the end of January. Okay, and the seventh step, if a property owner is still not satisfied, or still not happy with the assessment that was placed on their property, even after speaking with us, what I like to always say is nothing's ever written in stone. Um, they still have the opportunity to file an appeal with the Essex County Board of Taxation. So they have the right to file appeal every year, so they could continue to do that this year. The only difference is this year, the deadline is May first, where every other prior year it was April first, because the township's going through a revaluation, they give you an extra month to file that appeal. And that's the revaluation process in a nutshell, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yes, thank you. It was very informative. I do have a couple of questions though. Typically, what portion of the homes in a township, in this township, will will go up, which ones will stay the same, and what percentage will go down? Is it still basically a third, a third, and a third, or has that been thrown out of whack?
You know what? That that's interesting. That third, a third, a third has always been thrown out there, and I don't think there's ever been any evidence behind that. Uh, funny enough, it kind of came pretty close to that, where I think, you know, a little over sixty percent is going to be staying pretty neutral or going down. So that's that's good news. Um, I don't think there was any one particular style of home or size or home or neighborhood that's seeing a large shift one way or another. So it's a lot of different shifts within a neighborhood and within a style. So.
Okay. For for folks that previously felt that they paid too much, is there any recourse, or that's that's done? That door is closed, and we move forward from this point on?
We we move, I I that's, that would, uh, there would be a hundred percent of the taxpayers in any community that think they pay too much. Um, but yeah, I mean, once the appeal-
I'm I'm talking about just those that feel they- I'm I'm talking about just those that feel they legitimately pay too much, I I get it, all right? We we all have that that attitude, yes.
But any uh there's no big changes. So that is the assessment until the next year. Uh, there's ways that you can come speak to me, um if I think there is merit in reducing an assessment, I can do it for the following year. Um, but typically, the appeal deadline is equal first each year. Um, in two thousand twenty three, that will be extended to the age of thirty four, because we are conducting a revaluation, putting the numbers on for for next year. Um, but in any year, if that's it, anybody's out of luck after that date.
Okay. For for you, you mentioned that a hundred percent of um the exteriors of homes in town were in fact uh inspected, okay? Is is it if you can't get inside, okay, is that assessment typically higher or is it lower?
It it would typically be higher. So the way I like to explain it, if we don't gain access to the interior home, in my opinion, the assessment is going to be spot on or it's going to be too high. And the reason I say this is, like I said, our company is obligated to estimate at the highest, most reasonable potential. Now, a lot of people don't know what that means, so I'll take it a step further. If the home has a basement, it's reasonable to assume that the basement is finished with heat. It is tip, it's reasonable to assume that kitchens and bathrooms have been updated and the interior have been updated. Um, if you're a small ranch style home, thousand square feet, it's not reasonable to assume that that house has five bathrooms. So we have to estimate at the most reasonable potential. So what that does is any property owner that did work over the past ten years or so since the last reevaluation without permits and that information wasn't updated, we're going to pick up that information. Or what's going to happen, it's going to be an overestimate where the value is going to come in higher. So that's why, even though I said we only got into seventy five percent on this date, I think once these value letters filter out, some people are going to feel that their assessment's too high and it could very well be due to the fact that we did not get inside and therefore assumptions were made that were incorrect. So if that happens and they call our office, they could choose one of those two ways of performing that interior. We'll correct the information and then they would get a follow up letter from us with an updated assessment.
So it's always in their their best interest to let you in so you can see what it actually is and there are no assumptions made.
Of course, yes, so we're obligated to do so because by the end of the job, hopefully eighty nine percent let us in. Um, we got to give the assurance to those people that let us in and cooperate with the process, that no advantage is being gained by now by this.
And the process will be completed approximately when?
We're going to say approximately at this point, the end of January.
Yeah.
End of January.
Spoke to the Essex County Board of Tax, uh, the Essex County Board of Taxation, uh, last week. Uh, and the tax uh has collected that uh, we will get to the end of January, so. Um, if there is additional time that we need to be beneficial property owners, I would do more than allow.
Okay, great, thank you very much, very.
You're welcome.
So um, we had the unfortunate, I guess, unfortunate circumstance of being reevaluated at a traditionally very high uh time for home sales. In twenty twenty three, you'd ask probably ninety percent a very financial prognosticator, we're probably going to face a recession, it's probably going to be a burst in the housing bubble and housing prices are expected to plummet. Uh, we're a little better well insulated here in northern New Jersey, uh, just because our home prices were already pretty high compared to the rest of the nation. Is there going to be a lot of volatility uh potentially in in twenty twenty three, or is there a lot of the market predictors or indicators baked into the evaluation?
Commissioner, uh, one thing that I have seen, I mean, I do see every single sale. Uh, every every deed, every sale, I haven't seen any lag in the market market yet. I've seen um less needs come across my desk, uh, less volume, but I haven't seen the prices dip. Uh, but in the future, we we fill up the crystal ball accordingly than to know exactly what's going to happen. Uh, I consider we were, uh, we 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 tried not to be very aggressive when it came towards evaluation process. Um, just knowing that, you know, we are um, interest rates substantially higher than like four or six months ago. And then, as I said, it's going to happen, so we we try to um wheel it back as much as we can in that regard.
Is and and you you brought up the interest rates and I guess part of this process has been going on a while and I guess when it kicked off, we were at historic lows in terms of mortgage interest rates, which kind of spiked up the the home prices. Uh, but a- as you 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 mentioned, this in the last six months, rates haven't, rates have increased dramatically, al- albeit not historic highs, but they're significantly higher, at least twice as high. Uh, and you, the valuation is based on October first, so is, I guess, the increased uh mortgage rates, is that going to affect the home values, uh, because it's the Oc- October first date, or is it all the sales that have gone on in, let's say, the last year, when they were experiencing unprecedented lows? Would that, would that be kind of part of the the value that you have there?
Yeah, we we took that into account, we were well aware of that. So what our company did is we studied the sales. Uh, usually you go back two years, you know, to get a sampling. But um, like you mentioned, the values are as of October first, twenty twenty two. So we wait the sales that occur closest to that timeframe more heavily than the older sales. And in fact, the older sales that happened in twenty twenty one with the lower interest rates and the quote unquote COVID bubble that everyone speaks about, we actually had to trend those sales downward to reflect, you know, the current market conditions. So we are well aware of that, um, so we did our best to reflect the values as of October first, twenty twenty two.
And and my my last question, I guess, is um, might be outside, might be a little outside of your scope, and if that, if that's the case, that's fine. Uh, so let's say, January thirtieth, you complete your valuation, February first, there's a financial collapse. I I don't, I think all the financial prognosticators are not expecting something on a two thousand eight level, but let's say half of two thousand eight level. Are we going to see an onslaught of appeals that's going to create a lot of volatility? And then homeowners are not going to be able to be aware of where the, I guess, the the chips will fall and what their, what their tax rate will be, because there you'll have a lot of appeals which will kind of muddy the waters in terms of the overall value of the town.
It's a little bit out of my scope, but I I'll I'll answer it, um. So the first thing that I would like to say is there there really isn't a good time or a bad time to do a revaluation. As long as you're valuing everybody at the same data value, same point in time, whether the market's going up, down, or remaining the same, as long as you're treating everyone uniformly at that same point in time, it's that that's, number one, that's a good thing. Number two, anyone who files an appeal for this year, you have to use sales that take place the previous year. So if you were to file an appeal for tax year twenty twenty three, you could only focus on sales that occur between October one, twenty twenty one to October one, twenty twenty two. So in the event that there was a crash in February or March, that wouldn't affect you for the following year, as far as, you know, the township with the appeals. And there are programs in place that if that were to happen, you know, the assessor, we could adjust that going forward.
I think, thank you.
The the only thing I like to add is is that I I understand what Commissioner um Kelly is saying about the 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 values being high. But I just want to be clear, the way I interpret this, it's just about being, it's the distribution of taxes to be fair and equitable to everyone, so like you're saying, it doesn't really matter when you have it. And then I believe, and I'm not an expert in taxes, but it's up to the tax assessor then, as new sales come into neighborhoods and they see that market falling, then it's up to our tax assessor, which I believe you have programs in your computer to adjust all of those values, true?
To some extent, there is at least so much I can do. Uh, the the, if I I can't change individual assessment, or market trends. Uh, they give a perfect spot.
Right.
Oh, however, there is a down for my partner's sister, he was um, he early, you know, he was in test. Um, he was being with all the finance plans. He did this, did a reset, and he was for he was lowering specific areas of town neighborhoods as uh Mr. Brushman, I mean, for um, to to address and change. So the the key thing is that would also be done.
Okay, that's fine, in this, um, before, when we had a little break, we did have a little sidebar about the communication because people have been walking into my store and calling me on the phone. And I have to say, um, Commissioner Evans, they haven't been nice phone calls either, so I don't know how you feel. But um, just because they're not interpreting the um, you know, the rate that went out now, so like I was saying before, if we could put something on our our website or, you know, email people, because I think what people are doing, they're getting the new assessment, using the tax rate that's presently current, multiplying by that, and they're not liking us too much right now. But that being said, so whatever we could do to get the information out there, I think is um great, thank you.
I I just have a couple of questions. Um, so obviously, people getting this letter, they're sticker shock, right? They're seeing their home increasing two hundred thousand dollars, but by law, where do you have to put the assessment? You have to put it at the market rate, correct?
Yeah, we have to be at a hundred percent of market value.
Hundred percent of market value, so so people out there, uh, they they wouldn't want to sell their house for the old assessment, right?
I would hope not.
And then, can we just just give the two tax rates, so the estimate for this new valuation and the old tax rate, so people understand the difference?
The two thousand twenty two tax rate is three point eight six four. The, right now, the projected tax rate for two thousand twenty three, which as Rob said, is going to change, um, it is preliminary, that's two point five oh nine, I'm sorry, two point five oh six.
So anybody that got their letter and they're looking to put the tax rate and figure out what their new taxes, they should be, that estimate is two point five oh six, correct?
They applied the uh two thousand twenty two tax rate of three point eight six four. It would give a vastly inflated number to what their actual taxes are.
So I think a lot of people did that and they were freaking out.
Yeah, good way to put it.
So and just, uh, Rob, just give us your your website again.
Sure, it's W W W dot A S I N J dot com.
So A is in Anthony, S is in Sam, I is in uh Idaho. Uh, and New Jer- and New and J Jersey dot com, A S I N J dot com. So there's all kinds of information on your website. I think what Commissioner Patako said on our website, we we should at least get a link to theirs and any other information.
Moving forward, um, as we can always send out an e-blast, I I I think that's the term for it, I always hear the term changing. But one of those um, those emails to everybody, informing you of the website and also warning them, please don't apply the two thousand twenty two uh tax rate to your twenty three assessment.
Appreciate it, any other questions, commissioners?
Mayor, uh, sorry, Commissioner Evans, uh, you brought up a good point about the tax rate being two point five eight or whatever it was, oh 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 six. Uh, but I think it's important to point out how to do the math. Uh, it's not, you don't multiply the value by two point five, it's, well, it's point zero two five or whatever it is.
That dollar sound is represented.
Per thousand, right?
One hundred.
Or per one hundred, okay.
So, so a couple of things, right? Um, so thank you for for coming tonight to share uh with us, the process that you followed and the outcome. Um, I think there's, I think there's a couple of points that I think are important to clarify and make and try and simplify. Uh, so one, um, the results of the preliminary revaluation increased the value of the town from three point two billion to a little over five billion. So pretty much everybody in town has a property that has increased in value uh to to achieve that, so roughly one point eight billion dollar increase in value of the town. And uh from a normal standpoint, uh, we as a board have to collect the tax levy, so the money for the county, the school, and the municipality forms the tax levy. That numerator, which is now five billion, will basically is divided into the levy, which creates the tax rate. So that's how you get from the old rate of three point eight six four down to two point five oh six. But what's important about about that is when you go to uh to look at your assessed value, this simple calculation for someone to to follow is take your assessed value, divide it by one hundred and multiply it by two point five oh six and you'll get your taxes. Very simple. Uh, yeah, I understand the the decimals and 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 the way you did it, but I think in a simplified way, just take the gross assessed value, divide it by one hundred times that the preliminary twenty three rate, which is only the result of the revale, and uh and multiply it by the two point five oh six. You can look at your property uh record card, uh, your taxes, the tax full tax card you get, which tells you what your old assessment is and what your old uh uh tech property tax is, and you can compare them. So that's how, that's the simplest way uh that you can do it. Um, what's also important is for the people that didn't uh allow or didn't have the opportunity to have their house inspected, maybe they felt uncomfortable because of the pandemic. I encourage them to uh seek out having ASI come in and look at their property to make sure that their valuation is correct. In the letter, the valuation letter, there is an email address, I think it's nutley at A S I N J dot com, where you can email and request a copy of the property record card, which supports the valuation that's in the letter. I encourage everyone to email ASI and request your property record card, so you have that record, you should have, everybody should have that record for their for their home. And this way, you can look at it and determine whether or not it's correct. Because if it is correct, uh, you you might have a valuation question, but you're not looking at errors in your property record card. And it's important to get those corrected now, because if you wait, it's going to be a longer process with the tax assessor trying to correct that after the revaluation is over. So encourage people to please go get your property record card. And then the other piece is, which is in the letter laid out, is any questions you have on your valuation, the process, how they determine the value. I encourage people to schedule a meeting with ASI, uh, which will either be in person or virtually, to go over the discussion about how the value was determined for their property. Because because I would want everybody to have the assurance that says that they understand how it was valued, they know that their record card is is accurate and that they know, based upon what I said before, take the assessed value, divide it by one hundred times the two point five oh six, and you'll get a preliminary look at what your taxes are going to start out to be for next year. Now, I pause there to add emphasis. That's does not take into consideration what the changes in our levy, our cost will be for twenty twenty three, because we have not gotten to the point where the budgets are prepared for twenty twenty three. So there will be changes uh to that two point five oh six based upon what the new costs are for twenty twenty three. So while it's an estimate and it's a good comparison to your twenty two tax, it will not fully represent what your real tax will be in twenty twenty three, because we're just, it's too early in the process for that. Uh, we will be putting out, as Ed said, a blast tomorrow, reminding people of this information, they get uh clarification, uh, and I do apologize, some people did go to the municipal website and they saw the old tax calculator there and they used that to look at, uh, calculate their taxes. Uh, and that was in, that was wrong, so uh we need to, we'll clarify that uh tomorrow. If they have further questions, I encourage them, everybody, to speak to the tax assessor, who will gladly walk them through uh the process uh and 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 so on. If we get to the point where somebody wants to appeal, uh, we'll be happy to explain to them what's necessary in order to appeal their taxes, so they have, you know, their fair day, uh, so to speak, their fair day in court, right? Because all for us, all cards are faced up. And as Commissioner Patako, as you mentioned, the whole game game here is about fair and equitable distribution of the tax. And and John, to your point is, if there are macro level factors that affect the town, which so causes valuations to go down, you know, which so causes valuations to go down, you know, the whole value of the town will go down, and that will be compensated for in a higher tax rate. So tax, the tax rate will go up if the valuation go, goes down uh because, as the, as, because of the way the formula, formula works. But there's more to come. Uh, and again, as you said, you know, uh, through now, through the end of January, uh, anybody who does have questions that really do need it, uh, should have their house inspected. You know, again, I encourage them to reach out to ASI and get that scheduled uh right away. So, any other comments, guys?
Thank you. Have a good night. Let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have two on for this evening. Uh, my first one is uh a little late, but uh still worth noting, it's the National Guard's birthday. Uh, whereas the English settlements in North America were a tiny fringe along the eastern seaboard, a settlement pushed west into the interior of the institution of the militia, which the colonists brought with them from England, went with them. Whereas the National Guard's old, oldest regiments met for their first drill on the Village Green in Salem, Massachusetts. They were barely three months old, organized on December thirteenth, sixteen thirty-six, the day which we now celebrate as a National Guard birthday. Whereas the militia tradition meant citizens organizing themselves into military units responsible for their own defense, organizing the militia into regiments increased its efficiency and responsiveness, which provided, which proved critical for the defense of their communities. Its oldest units, like the ones pictured above, are the oldest units in the United States military, among the oldest military units in the world. Whereas the militia called the National Guard since nineteen sixteen has served community, state, and nation for nearly four hundred years, and citizen soldiers have fought in every major conflict from sixteen thirty-seven to present day operations in Afghanistan and Iraq. Much has changed since the first muster. Whereas from the revolutionary, from the revolution to the civil war, to the world wars, to the present day, the township of Nutley is thankful and is proud to support the United States Army National Guard. On the occasion of its, of the National Guard's three hundred and eighty-fifth birthday, the township remembers those who have sacrificed to serve the nation and the National Guard, and thanks and recognizes National Guard veterans who call Nutley home today. And therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, recognizes and celebrates the United States National Guard on its three hundred eighty-sixth birthday. So moved.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Uh, the next one I have is for uh the United States Space Force, which is celebrating its third birthday today. Uh, whereas the US Space Force, USSF, is a new branch of the Armed Forces. It was established on December twentieth, twenty nineteen, with the enactment of the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty National Defense Authorization, and currently has sixteen thousand individuals assigned to the Space Force, which is an option given to the Air Force cadets at the Air Force Academy as of two thousand nineteen. Whereas the primary mission of the US Space Force as directed by Congress is to maintain, protect, and expand the US fleet of advanced military satellites that form the backbone of the US global military operations. Whereas the USSF was established within the Department of the Air Force, where, where, meaning the Secretary of the Air Force has responsibilities for the USSF under the guidance of the Secretary of Defense. Additionally, a four-star general known as the Chief of Space Operations serves as a senior military member of the USSF. Whereas on September first, nineteen eighty-two, the Air Force established AFSPC with Space Operations as its primary mission. Cold War era space operations focused on missile warning, launch operations, satellite control, space surveillance, and command and control for the national leadership. In nineteen ninety-one, Operation Desert Storm validated the Command's continuing focus on support to the warfighter through the use of GPS enabled the famous left hook, proving the valuable space-based capabilities. Whereas after nine eleven terrorist attacks, the President directed military action Afghanistan, in F, against Afghanistan and Iraq, the AFSPC provided extensive space-based support to the US Central Command Commander in areas of communications, positioning, navigation, and timing, meteorology, and warning. In two thousand and five, the Air Force expanded its mission to areas to include cyberspace. Whereas in July twenty eighteen, the Air Force Cyber Mission Transfers transferred to the Air Combat Command, which generated the greatest capacity for integrated information warfare capability within the Air Force, which allowed the AFSPC to focus on gaining and maintaining spaces superiority, outpacing our adversaries in the space domain. And therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex, thank our Nutley members of the Space Force and recognize and celebrates the United Space, United States Space Force on its third birthday. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one resolution, uh, three sixty-seven, there's twenty-two. And pursuant to RS forty-eight, colon, four dash fifty-eight, I have a budget transfer from the tax assessor's O and E for six thousand dollars to tax assessor's salary, salary and wage for six thousand dollars. So moved.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patraco?
Be resolved by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex, New Jersey, then in accordance with the provisions of RS forty-eight, four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriations into two thousand twenty-two budget B and the same are hereby authorized and approved. Um, ten thousand from O and E, um, to Fire Department, O and E, one hundred and thirty thou, I'm sorry, let me read them all. From O and E, ten thousand, um, from account number two zero one three eighteen one hundred, O and E, also two zero one three eighteen two hundred, for twenty thousand in Fire Department Salary and Rage Wage Account two dash zero one dash three one four dash one hundred, one hundred thousand, um, for a total of one hundred and forty thousand. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Whereas the Nutley Police Department employs Leo's ones and Leo two officers. This Leo one officer is a volunteer who is trained to assist the Nutley Police Department in including but not limited to traffic, crowd control, at civic events. The Leo two officers have full police powers while on duty. And whereas the Nutley Police Department has approved Joseph Leon, Mark Delita, and Michael Lambro, Brugo, as Leo two officers for one year beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the Nutley Police Department has appointed Oliver Allen, Pagnish, Bayat, and Randolph Afaro as a Leo one officers for one year beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex State, and New Jersey, that the Nutley Police Department is authorized and appoints Joseph Leon, Mark Delita, and Michael Lambrogo as Leo two officers, and Oliver Allen, Pagnish, Bayat, and Randolph Afaro as Leo one officers for January first, two thousand twenty-three, for December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex, New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for surplus equipment that is no longer in use by the township. The vehicles, the equipment slash vehicles listed below in the Department of Parks and Public Property, a nineteen ninety-six International Bucket Truck, uh, a nineteen ninety-nine Northeastern ST Sprayer, and the third is a two thousand eight Easy Lawn Turf Master Hydro Ceder. Be it further resolved that the above equipment is available for inspection on weekdays between seven AM and two PM. Be it further resolved, the equipment is to be sold as is and where is, all bids to be received on Wednesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, by eleven AM prevailing time in the Commission Chambers Township Ball, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time there will be publicly opened and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex State, and New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS forty-eight, colon, four dash fifty-eight, following transfers of appropriations to the two thousand twenty-two budget B and same are hereby authorized and approved in Department of Parks and Public Property from health insurance in the amount of thirty-three thousand to buildings, other expenses, parks, other expenses, and recreation committee, and the like amount of thirty-three thousand. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. This uh resolution is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Whereas on November fourth, twenty twenty-one, the Township of Nutley entered an authorized resolution twenty-two ninety dash twenty-one to enter into a contract, contract with DMR Architects located at seven 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 Terrace Avenue, Hasbro Heights, New Jersey, for the investigation and redevelopment plan for the Diamond Springs redevelopment area. And whereas change order number one has been authorized from the original contract, amounts be increased by fifteen hundred dollars. And whereas the funds are available from count number two dash oh one, two two six dash two oh five, has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that change order number one is attached, is a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with DMR Architects for the investigation and redevelopment plan for the Diamond Springs area is hereby, hereby authorized and approved. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. Whereas the Ma, Morris County Co-op awarded a bid for road resurfacing to Tilcon, New York, Incorporated Nine Enton Road, Parsippany, New Jersey, for the period of January first, twenty twenty-two, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. And whereas Nutley is a member of the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council, whereas resolution one eight two dash two two was adopted by the Board of Commissioners meeting on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, awarding a contract to Til, Tilcon, New York for milling and paving of the Department of Public Works Garage located at One Courtland Street, Nutley, New Jersey. Whereas funds are available from account number G oh four one seven two, there's four oh one, in the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. And whereas Engineering Services has recommended the attached change order number one, in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and forty-four cents for additional quantities for a total contract of one hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and nine cents. And whereas funds are available from account number G oh four one seven two dash four oh one, in the amount of nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and forty-four cents, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that change order number one is attached, is a change from the contract originally awarded to Tilcon, is hereby authorized and approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. Friends of Nutley Singers, license number sixty-one dash two two, on premise fifty fifty cash raffle to be held Sunday, February twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Nutley Junior Raider Booster Club, license number sixty-two twenty-two, on premise merchandise raffle, and license number sixty-four twenty-two, on premise fifty fifty cash raffle to be held Saturday, tw, uh, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex State, and New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved, and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person should limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Bruno, do we have a need for executive?
Do we have a motion?
Well, a motion to go to, is it to executive session?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public for meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into closed executive session to discuss personnel litigation and potential litigation. Be it, be it further resolved that at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public, shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractor matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. Uh, since we will be having no further uh business, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci? Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi. Right, everybody.
Twenty-seven.